Good evening. Welcome to the live meeting of the Select Board on June 28, 2021. This is our first live meeting since March 2020. And welcome to everyone who's here and who's participating virtually. This meeting is being recorded in the usual manner by Minuteman Media. And I just have a few remarks to start. Good evening, my name is Terry Ackman, I'm the Chair of the Select Board. As many of you know, the Select Board in Concord, in consultation with public health, public safety, and guidance from the state, voted to rescind the declaration of emergency effective June 15, 2021. The governor signed into law on June 16, provisions which allow for the continued ability of public boards and committees to meet virtually until April 1, 2022. The Concord Select Board will often be meeting live, and sometimes we might meet over Zoom, and we will try as much as possible to have hybrid capability during this period, starting today, June 28, going until April 20 of 2022. We may, from time to time, have Select Board members join the meeting virtually, and we encourage members of the public to continue to access our meetings via Zoom or in person. Both locations will be posted on the meeting agenda. So we look forward to striving for a new normal and encourage participation from the public in our municipal governance. Okay, so with that, I would like a motion for the consent calendar.
So move to approve the consent agenda, which is the Town Accountant Warrants of June 24, 2021, and the sales tax AP for June 24, 2021.
Second. Right, we don't need roll call, yep, all in favor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi. Okay, and the Town Manager's Report is next.
Good evening, everyone, it's good to be here in person. Maybe the roll call thing will flatten the time of the meeting. So it is great to be here, and I do want to extend my thanks to Jeremy and Chris, and Mark Colley, and all the other in the media network, and Jason Bolger, who's not here, the RIT Director, for the work they put into getting this set up. It is a little, can be a little clunky, but I think we have a number of people with us on Zoom, as Jeremy says, so things working so far. So briefly, I did submit, I apologize, I was out of the office for a couple of days last week, so my Town Manager's Report didn't go out till this afternoon. And the big thing, obviously, is the broadband outage. And I do have Dave Wood and our Telecom Director is on his way. And so I may hold off on that until, as if I'm here. So, I mean, I think Greg and Dave will talk in more, can answer questions in more detail, but as you know, we've, starting on Friday at about 3 o'clock, there was a fiber break, and that affected a small number of customers. And then, I said, I'm not really great in explaining the details, but it caused a cascading effect of other issues that resulted into, maybe not say widespread in terms of concerns of customers, but certainly persistent outages. And when, at various moments, we think we've got it fixed, and then discover additional problems, so, you know, it's frustrating, it's frustrating to me, I know it's frustrating to our teams, and I can only imagine how frustrated our customers must be. So I'm not going to sugarcoat it, or try and find some kind of silver lining here. It's frustrating, and it's, I don't think, you know, everyone has been, you know, working really without rest to try and fix it. So our commitment to trying to get it back online is there. It's just, it's just been a series of things that have unfolded that were preventing us from getting there. So on behalf of the C N O P, we apologize for the outage. We share everybody's frustration, we're just as frustrated that it's not working as any of the customers, so. I don't know if there's any questions about that for?
Can I ask what impact that has on public safety, which I assume relies on its internet connection for electrical communications?
We actually, you know, they do rely on, to some extent, our network, but they are not impacted, I don't think, by this particular phase. They did have an issue last week that was resolved. But as we sit here now, like I said, not every broadband customer is out. It's somewhat, there are certain pockets. So right now, it's, they're not.
Correct, Friday evening.
Can I ask you, please, to come up to this microphone?
That's Greg Marsen, Director of Telecommunications for the town.
So is, in regard specifically for the emergency radio system, it was down for, the fiber section was down for about 20 to 45 minutes, somewhere in that area. That was our biggest concern on Friday evening. We focused 100% on that. And then, when we did bring up that fiber segment that we found the cut, then, of course, the radios came up, and so did not the customers who were affected, the people in Cosmer, Commerceford, Black Horse Place, and Unersnak Hill, which is where the emergency services are on the tower. So that's what we focused on immediately, to make sure. That is correct statement, yes, yes, so.
If the customers are out now, what does the service be doing?
So, what, there's not much they can do at the moment, but we do believe, just before coming over here, we do believe the server issue was, I'm hoping, is resolved. They rebuilt the two DHCP servers that, I believe now, are good, they started saying, we saw a bunch of leases, that's the term for DHCP address. They see a bunch of leases starting to all pick up and grab. So the customer O N Ts are taking the leases, and we're believing, hoping, right now, but I didn't have time to, because I don't want, I was trying not to be late. I apologize for being a few minutes late, so.
What's an O N T?
Oh, okay, so an O N T is the actual modem that is in the home, that resides in the home, and that's what our network talks to, so we can see each and every individual customer, and that has a.
That you have to get assigned before you could talk to the internet.
Right, well, that's good news, so. If someone's still not working tomorrow morning. We had some trouble today about knowing which phone number to call, which is the best phone number to call?
Well, it is set up to call our first, you know, call first tier support, which is NetEgrity. They're the three, yep, that is, that is the 978-318-3199, which is on the broadband website.
And when I was trying to get, because I'm a broadband customer, and when the internet went out, and I tried to get updates, I went to Twitter, because on the website, it says, "Go to Twitter for the latest updates." And there was an initial message yesterday, but no updates since then. And when I went to the Light Internet website, there was no update on that, even though prior service outages in the past have had updates there. So how, how is the public being informed? And I guess, it seems to me, it's not adequate. How should the customers be informed?
I don't, I didn't have the ability to update the website. That is something that they're resolving. And it didn't get updated, did not get communicated as well as it should have. And I will be the first one to say that's, you know, a true statement.
We're really frustrated, not knowing an update, not knowing when things would come back online, and just being lost, you know? Especially people who work at home, like myself, you don't know, well, should I go find an internet cafe? Or, you know, what, whatever I can do? Or maybe this is just about to come back up, and I'll be fine, but I didn't know.
And, and so as Stephen mentioned, there was a small percentage, but what was happening, and you understand DHCP, every time somebody would reboot an O N T, their modem, it would grab it, and some of those would be successful. So at any given moment, we were only seeing somewhere between 35 and 39, 40 customers down, that we're not getting, but we know it affected a larger pool, for sure.
At 1:30, I was able to do that, and get re, I mean, at 8:00 AM, I was able to do that, get reconnected. At 1:30, it went down, and since then, have not, I tried every hour since then.
I would not be surprised if you rebooted now that it came up. But I'm just saying, that's what we, that's what we were experiencing.
Folklore that's being exchanged on Twitter.
Right, so we did ask NetEgrity, which they did, was to, they had an upfront message, as soon as you dialed into that 3199, it said, "Please reboot your equipment," that would be.
About that, though, we did get that message. But then it says, you know, it basically says something like, "Everything is fixed and resolved, if you're still having issues, please reboot. And if you're still having issues, call back." So we did all that, we rebooted, we called back, and there's no human being answering phones. That is frustrating, when you call back.
They did have a delay, and I called them and asked, there was a delay. If you sat there for about 15 or 20 seconds, you would then get into a queue to ring in, I do understand.
It rang back to our phone at our house and left a voicemail. It was really, really screwed up, so. Appreciate if you could, I agree with Matt, the communications is even more important. We know there's going to be outages sometimes, but if we can explain them to people, it's much better.
Absolutely.
Kind of, I can shake proportion here. Every time, like, there's a stray dog, or people are supposed to not water their lawns, or there's a spider in a parking meter, you get a reverse 911 call. And in fact, we get way too many of those, because the reverse 911 is supposed to be for real emergencies, not for public information, as I understand it. And if you constantly get these calls about relatively trivial things, that somebody thinks that people ought to know about, and we don't use it for serious things. I know, for instance, there was a gas leak in Mun Street a couple of years ago. Well, and the utility trucks were all over the place, and we got no reverse 911 call. And so that's a resource that's available to inform people, and it is.
But we don't get the call, because the internet's down.
But you have a telephone.
No, our telephone is connected to the internet.
Well, all right, but people who do have telephones didn't get the message either.
So I think, in terms of, if I may, there's two aspects to the code rights, and this is our reverse 911 system, there are emergency aspects, but we have used it for occasional, community-wide things. In this case, it wasn't community-wide, because as we were going through, it was always a limited pool of customers. So not, not everybody in Concord has broadband, and then not every broadband with customers is impacted. So we would have judged not to use the reverse 911 system, because there would have been thousands of households who would have gotten a call that didn't apply to them. And so we were really focused on, in the communications part, we really should have done a better job. I think, in defense of Greg and his team, I think they were so buried in trying to fix the problem that getting the communication back out, maybe took a second priority. And I, and I understand that, that's why we have a third-party vendor who's supposed to assist us with that, and we had problems with that. We were really, it's like, it's early, we were really excited, and we got the third-party vendor. So when there's an outage or something, and over the weekend or the middle of the night, we have somebody who's going to answer the phone.
Yep.
And that relationship has been good so far, but this one was really, it did not work out, it has not worked out that well. Obviously, when we do our after-action discussion, that's going to settle that as well. But again, I don't, I want to defend Greg and Dave's effort, but I think they'll be the first to admit that, you know, the results just haven't been there on this. You know that with, we are just as upset as anybody else.
We have, we've resolved the communication issue. I will be taking full responsibility on both Twitter and the website. And I probably, as Stephen said, probably could have been a little bit more active, but I was, we were, all of us were up for the whole weekend. I have two engineers that literally probably haven't slept in 48 hours. And, and I just recently, we just brought in another person just to kind of take over, because they're exhausted, and so, yeah.
Diligence on that, Linda?
So I appreciate all the work that you and your team have done, and I know when you're in a fix-it-right-now kind of mode, you deal with what's in front of you. It seems to me that we did have some other issues related, similar to this, a couple of weeks ago, or in the spring sometime, I may be off on the timeline here. And I guess, the question, and then I heard the terminology cascading problems, you know, you thought you had it fixed, and all of a sudden, something occurs somewhere else. I guess my questions are more at the systems level in terms of, you know, what kind of process will you use now to sort of analyze what's just happened, and identify what, why these things may have happened? And then also, you know, where is the redundancy in the system?
So, two questions are there. I'll answer the latter one. There's redundancy in the system. The system is when we have what we call major feed fiber and gets cut. That's what we've experienced, probably every outage we've had since I've been here, and I'm sure many outages, that's either storm damage, that's animal, as we know, squirrels, chipmunks. We, we had a fiber just get destroyed by an ant nest. It's amazing what, what nature can do. And you wonder, you go, why would they be interested in a fiber optic cable? It's, it's plastic and glass, but they do, we don't know why. So up until literally what we're experiencing now, everything prior to this has been a straight-out fiber cut. And when we have to pull quarter-mile, or, yeah, we have to always go back to the two splice points, so they can be great distances. By the time you get a crew doing that physical work, it also takes, they have to, sometimes, depending on how big the fiber feed is, and if you know fiber, it's thinner than your hair, and we have machines that mechanically splice those, they take hours to get it right, when we have large feeder cables. So for the example, a week ago, it was a squirrel, decided to chew right through it, and it took our team about four hours to splice that, just to splice it once they had the cable run again. So that's, that's just, we'll never avoid those.
They're localized types of issues, right?
That's where you had, right, where this is.
An outage that seemed to be based upon a system's.
Because of the server, correct, there's no doubt. We had a road, that's correct, correct, so everything up to.
Because, I don't know, systems review that maybe needed to kind of.
We already have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, and we're going to.
A system that failed, that was actually supposed to help with the redundancy a while back, and that actually created a problem? You know, there was a switch that was supposed to switch, and it didn't, and it created an outage. This was a few months back.
That's correct, and that really is part of the legacy systems that have been there. We are in the process of upgrading all of our servers, or switches, because the switch that did fail was out of life. It's been out of life for a long time with Cisco. And we realized in the design, it wasn't even necessary, so we removed it, and that's how we brought the system, everything back up, that one. And that was a few weeks back, that's correct.
So that, Matt, to your point, and actually, Linda, to your question, that incident kind of caused us to really relook at the architecture, the fundamental architecture of the system, and we're strategically making changes and upgrades, and some streamlining of it as well. And we were in the middle of that. And so that's, I don't know if that's a factor in some of that transition in this incident, we're going to find that out, but we do recognize that a lot more work needs to be done on this. We were kind of trying to stay ahead of it, but it caught up to us and passed us.
I wasn't being critical of you on the communication issue about the problem, but I think, if you're fully occupied in dealing with solving the problem, I hope there are people higher up the chain of command who could take the responsibility. We have a communications director, we have, you know, we have, we have a substantial staff in the management of the town. And if they're informed of this, they can make the decisions about how to inform people about the problem. It's not your, you know, it's, that's not your responsibility.
Well, I believe I have some of that responsibility from the one running this department, and I appreciate your, your patience and your.
I'm willing to place the blame on somebody higher up than you.
Well, we really appreciate all your hard work.
No, I mean, completely fair, completely fair, that's all. I mean, we do have a public information officer.
Right.
I will say, it's not excused, both she and I separately were away out of town for the weekend, but that's not excused. Ultimately, it's our jobs to make sure that the communities communicate with us. I mean, we do have a good job of that.
But going forward now, tonight and tomorrow, if the Public Information Officer and others could, you know, try to stay ahead of things, because things may happen this week. We may be completely out of the woods, but maybe we're not.
I'm not positive on that, I'd love to report that to you right now, but I'm going to go back and continue at it, and work with my team to be sure that we get this result.
Yeah, for you and your team, working so hard, appreciate it.
And your explanation for the public is helpful. So that's, I know it's taking time away from what you need to do, but it's very helpful for the public, right, so thank you.
Thank you.
And you're a whole third of our live audience.
Don't give that away. We have 200 people on Zoom, right?
It's okay, Dave?
Dave, sure.
I just wanted to clarify one thing. David Wood, the Director of the Light Plant, you guys talked about the call centers just a little bit ago, there's actually two different call centers. There's one for the electric side, and then there's one for the broadband. So the NetEgrity one is the one for the broadband side. And I think it's important to note that, because they are too different. We have some stuff we have to go through with them. We're not necessarily pleased with the response with the customers got from them. I will tell you that our customer service team probably answered close to 600 calls today. And, you know, they did a great job, they're still in the office answering calls. Hopefully not, hopefully they don't have to, but.
Team, and they were very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, so I just wanted to clarify that. And we completely understand the communications piece, we missed it, we know it. And that will be discussed as part of our after-action plan, so I appreciate the feedback.
Possibly in a month or so, if maybe if you gentlemen would come back and explain what you learned, and what we're going to do going forward, or possibly, if it's very, the Town Manager can handle it.
Sure, we'll have a follow-up report, if they're here or in writing.
Yeah, more than willing to come back. Thank you.
Thanks again for coming in, and all the work done.
Good luck.
So continuing, I guess, with the Town Manager's Report?
So briefly, we did, the federal government is, you know, kind of a registration process for American Recovery, the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA. And so we did submit our registration, and they're basically doing it in two 50% tranches. I think one, as I know in the report, 50% at some point in time in the near future, and then we send in our registration, if you will, and then another 50%, I think, a year after, and then we, until December 2024, spend the funds. So one of the things we're doing internally is looking at some priorities of things that we think at, from a department level, are priorities for economic vitality, infrastructure broadband being a big issue as well. We definitely heard during the pandemic, we definitely heard a strong connection between availability of broadband and economic vitality, which is, and economic recovery is really a thrust of ARPA, so the eligibility is going to be tied to it, I think so, either tied to infrastructure or economic recovery. So taking the guidelines, we're going to kind of frame out some of the things that we think would be, things that we could use in that regard, and we'll come here and have a discussion about priorities, and what we think is going, kind of talk through why the departments feel like these are the areas we should focus on, the feedback from the board, and then kind of settle on a plan for those.
Excellent.
Any questions about ARPA?
We look forward to having that discussion when you're ready.
Just a couple of quick hitters here. There was a thorough, just when we talked about the thorough discussion meeting, so there was that workshop, something went well, and he was there, there was a couple breakout sessions, exchange of feedback. So I was not present for it, but it sounds like it was a positive session. And then, I want to go to the bottom, CPW. Monument Street Culvert repair work is going to get started soon. We had the emergency funding through our article line, the town meeting. So folks should be mindful in fact that that's going to be the route. They're going to keep Monument Street open, but that is a very narrow road, so it's probably the one lane only. So we are, so expect delays or find alternate routes, it's a big, big project. And then finally, I just have a call, tourism by the numbers. May 9, May 2019 versus 2021, to that May 2019, there was 1,256 visitors. This is, I mean, 19 is pre-pandemic. 1,256 visitors and $948 revenues. In 2021, it is less visitors, 1,52, but four times the amount of revenue, $1,056, and that's just kind of getting started post-pandemic, so.
Is that per day, what is this revenue?
The month of May.
For what?
For revenues generated by the visitor center.
Visitor center, thank you.
Visitor center, so this is basically this report from Beth Williams, just a data point, which I thought, I was going to write a narrative, but my numbers really tell the story, and I won't go through them here, because, but they're in my report, and I apologize for the latest report. Like, so I was talking about broadband today. But really, the numbers are really encouraging in terms of tourism, visitorship, thoughts of that.
Stephen, does that reflect tour income that comes through there, as well as whatever items they sell?
There's some merch there, for sure, but whenever I came, I saw Concord t-shirts and the like. But no, it really is, tourism is really coming back strong. And I think one of the things that, at the start, has gone well, I don't have it in here, but we are working on our plan for placing economic vitality and tourism as a new division in DPLM that requires a board vote, so we'll be presenting that. We are, if you will, not out of the budget, it's probably going to be funded. We're going to add to the board at a future, soon upcoming meeting. And once that's all said and done, I think what you'll see is, not, I mean, Beth is already doing it, but taking something we didn't do in the past, which is, a tour gets booked, and then she figures out, okay, what businesses does this tour really connect with? What types of things do they want to see? She can target specific businesses and say, you know, we've got this bus coming in, are you interested? She works for hotels, some hotels have purchased, like, these were in the tour guides, or tour guide certifications a couple of weeks ago. And so, like, that lines up tours for those, like, local tours with those people. Some hotels have pre-purchased tours, so when they have guests, they can just hand them the pass for the tour. And so it's that integration between the buses rolling up and our economic and cultural assets in the community that wasn't really there before. And so I, I'm pleased that, you know, this is kind of a vision that I started with when I got here, because in my experience, tourism and alcohol retail are strictly linked. And so having a group that shares that vision and really executing it has been, I think, good, and I think businesses are seeing benefits of it. That's been a good thing.
Great, any other questions for the Town Manager? Sorry, Stephen, did I cut you off? Okay, great. All right, we're going to move on to, oh, I have a couple of very brief remarks. Liaison list, we agreed to it last time, and we have a couple of slight changes. Linda will be doing the trustees, right? And we need that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
I'm sorry, Linda is going to be taking over trustees of town donations. And that means Linda has a little bit too much, and we're looking for someone to volunteer to be the M A P C slash magic liaison. Linda researched it, they need Tuesday mornings, once a month.
I did it last year. I'm not volunteering.
You're not volunteering, okay.
Wait, I'll sell that.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for your honesty. How long does a meeting last?
I mean, the meetings, no, the meetings are actually well managed, and it's really about, once a month, for about an hour and a half typically. The meetings are about regional coordination projects, that are typically grant proposals that M A P C is pursuing, and things like, for example, one of the most recent is, things is about the FEMA plans that all the towns have to have, and doing a coordinated approach, you know, it's sort of a bundled package of them, managed by the M A P C. That's just an example of the kinds of regional coordination we can have. We just finished a process where we were giving feedback on the Regional 2050 Plan, you know, and the major initiatives that, planning initiatives. So it's a planning-oriented activity, it's closest to planning board, but on a regional level. I think that the challenge with the organization is that there really isn't a formal regional structure in Massachusetts. You know, counties typically provide such. there really isn't a formal regional structure in Massachusetts, you know, counties typically provide such a structure. And Middlesex County doesn't really have, you know, any, any entity. So it's very ad hoc which communities participate in which initiatives. And so it's a constant struggle to sort of find that critical mass to to proceed.
Okay, so.
And it's also grantarama essentially.
Right. And it's Tuesday mornings by Zoom or do you?
It has been by Zoom. There's been discussions about continuing the meetings primarily by Zoom because of the regional aspects. The travel could be pretty heavy, but maybe have a couple of in person events per year to sort of physically need.
So either of you, Jenny or Linda, Jenny or Susan, if not, maybe everybody will think it over.
I'm kind of interested, but I want to look at the timing in terms of.
Okay.
What time in the morning usually?
I think it's typically like nine o'clock going to 10:30ish.
All right, let me know, Susan, if that works. So, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't know that it has to be a select board member.
Okay, we do, there is a representative from the planning department who typically tends.
Yeah, Elizabeth Hughes does from the department, but not in terms of a citizen participating. So I think that that's what we would be seeking is some citizen participation of some sort.
Great. Thank you, Susan. That's great. Okay. And the other remark that I have is we made a lot of progress last week on our annual goals. If you recall, we looked at progress that we had made last year. And we were pleasantly surprised how much we were able to accomplish even during the pandemic. So what I'm targeting now is that our first focused meeting on July 19th will be a goal setting session. And in advance of that, if everyone would please take last year's goals and mark up what you want to continue for this upcoming year and add whatever else you want to do. And if you cross out, you know, if you think we've already accomplished it. So I'd like to get a markup from each of you, and I will consolidate everyone's markup into one document that we will have in the packet for July 19.
Okay. So you'd like this in the next two weeks?
Yeah, by July 9th, I'm thinking. So I'll have a week to get it to Jeremy to put it in the packet. Okay, we are now on to the FY21 revolving fund budget adjustment. And I understand Kerry has the trustees meeting, so she's not with us.
Liz Russ is here.
Liz, great. She's on Zoom, I think. All right.
If there are questions.
Yes, here.
Hi, Liz.
Hi. Okay, there you are. Great. Okay. So the packet, the information in your packet is self explanatory. This is the revolving fund for the RHSO account. And we have added supplemental services that other towns have paid for already this year. And this is required to allow us to spend that money on providing those supplemental services. So there's no budget impact. There's no cost to Concord. This has happened for the last two years, I believe, and is fairly routine. But it does require an approval from the finance committee and yourselves.
Right. So I understand that several of the towns had additional work that was needed that wasn't anticipated. Concord is not one of those towns, but we are the host community. So therefore, we have to take the vote to increase this revolving fund. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, first of all, congratulations. I think that this is a reflection of the success of the Regional Housing Service Office. Great example of regional success. And though it does seem to me that we could bring in front of town meeting a increase in the allocation that's available to that fund so that in the future, because this is becoming somewhat routine, it sounds like, as the as the Services Office expands in its scope of its work, it's going to likely keep hitting this limit. And so it's been successful beyond our expectations. Maybe we need to think about that for town meetings. It's not an urgent issue. It's just something, a housekeeping issue that could avoid this meeting once a year that we have.
We do add, we do increase the amount that we ask for as an upper limit at each year. And we assume that that's going to be sufficient. This last year with COVID was was really much higher. In fact, we added 20% more more work to our office than than we had budgeted for. So it was substantially more. But we we do plan and increase each year. And we hope that next year will be closer to what we're planning.
I mean, is there any downside to making it, let's say, 500K as a limit? I mean, does it do anything if if we set it to that?
I think Kerry prefers to keep it more reasonable to to what you expect, what the budget would actually show.
Yeah, it's just a little bit difficult with many towns participating to, you know, control that.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
As we look, and this is a in view, Liz, as we look towards the next warrants, we certainly have that discussion internally and have to run a little bit of analysis and see if something needs to be done. And if not, why do we feel like it shouldn't be changed?
We have any number of funds that we have a $100,000 limit. We spend 20K, you know, I mean.
I just have a question about, do we, does the hosting community change or is it, it changes periodically? And it's us for now, for period of time.
We've been at for a duration of.
I think that it it started in Sudbury and then it moved to Concord. And I think with the outfitting of Knox Trail and all of the technology that we put in place, I think we made a commitment to stay in Concord. Concord receives $21,000 a year for that hosting. And so, and that's really been used with the technology and the rent and the other expenses and the cleaning and what have you. But I think that the logistics of moving would be difficult.
That makes total sense to me. I just wanted to clarify in terms of the discussion about changing the allocation. And that would be permanent as far as we're concerned. I mean, that that we would be hosting indefinitely as far as we know.
Okay, well, I think it's an annual vote at town meeting. So if we're not hosting. Right. So for non-hosting, we wouldn't even have that.
So Liz, I'm certainly in favor of this. It's really a housekeeping issue in many ways. But if I may just ask you a related question, I noticed that this additional work that came in from these communities was basically related to emergency rental assistance, as I recall. And was it the care's money that was allowing these towns, you think, to take on this additional work?
Most of the towns paid for their additional work through their CPA funds.
CPA, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're.
I'd like to move to approve an FY21 budget adjustment of $56,000 to the Regional Housing Services Revolving Fund for a total FY21 budget of $331,000 to account for the increase in contracted services, which is fully offset by fees collected for those services.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Liz, did you have any trouble hearing us?
No, it was fine. It was fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
I mean, it's the camera, so it's a little, you're a little small, but I can, I can hear you fine.
So the historical footnote that Liz Russ was the first hybrid meeting participant of the select board.
All right, thank you, Liz.
Should rechargeable?
All right, our next item, we're going to have another hybrid participant. I think Elise Woodward will be with us to, as we discuss and adopt the capital planning task force recommendations. And we'll also be doing a little bit of screen sharing during this time. So, Elise, are you with us? Hi, Elise, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. So I'm going to use myself because I have a baby in the room.
You can have a baby there. It's not.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for joining us, Liz. I mean, Elise. Okay, thank you, Elise. So Jeremy, is it possible to share the screen for a minute? Page, we're looking at page six through eight of the packet. I'm just going to very quickly summarize the recommendations. Okay, so it's the next page. Okay, so we are recommending a long term capital planning process for very large projects be adopted by the select board and the school committee. Next page, please. We are recommending that a large, a very large project, also known as a tier three project, is any project exceeding a cost of 5 million? Or a project with two or more phases exceeding 5 million or more. And that the recommendations from the report be formally integrated into current town and school policies and practices. And the next page, we have two more recommendations. A debt template be designed to summarize and present the very large projects and that this debt template be updated annually. And finally, that we make available for citizen input the integrated town and school tier three project list. So altogether, what we tried to do with this process was without creating another committee or more bureaucracy, we tried to address what we heard from the public and what we thought needed to be improved in the capital planning process. So just very quickly, there are five things on that list. Number one, more integration of town and school. Number two, more transparency. Number three, more public input. Number four, all projects together on one chart, sequenced for the next 10 years, updated annually and easily found on the website and on the FinCom report. And number five, eliminating surprises and smoothing the debt. So finally, Jeremy, if you could go to the next page after this. That one. Okay, so after town meeting, each year, we're recommending that the plan be updated. And then three meetings, September, a joint meeting of the select board and school committee to present the first draft for public comment, and then a 45 day public comment period. A November meeting where the town manager and school superintendent present the plan to FinCom and again, take public comment. And finally, a joint meeting in December of the select board and school committee to discuss, take public comment and approve the plan. Elise, do you have anything that you want to add?
Hi.
I think, Jeremy, we're okay with the screen sharing. We're all set.
I Okay. Sorry to be extra challenged tonight.
Are you, do you have any comments that you want to add?
So I can see and hear you.
Okay.
But can you hear me?
Yes. I was just saying, do you have any more comments to add?
I think that's a very good summary. I I guess I want to be certain that the, the, I don't know if any of the select board members were able to listen in on the conversation of the Fin, Finance Committee the other night on Thursday night about these recommendations. But the the Finance Committee felt that the recommendations were quite good. And, but I think that the more comments have to do with some of the questions that the select board raised to the task force when we made our presentation on June 7th. And that has to do with the debt smoothing input in in these recommendations. So I think to the extent that the template can be adjusted to include the debt smoothing components that we discussed on June 7th, that would be very helpful. It's sort of beyond the scope of the report that the task force developed beyond the scope of our recommendations. But I think it would go a long way toward being specific for about what the debt smoothing options are. And by this, I mean the ability to put into the template any offset of by selling assets, if that changed the value of project, if there were grants that changed the value of a project or you really any other components of funding other than bond, bonding or debt override. So I think that was the primary interest in the Finance Committee and having a clear clear options for debt smoothing. I I guess I would just say that relative to the the option of a standing committee or not a standing committee, and our recommendations are pretty clear that it's we're recommending an enhanced process, not an additional committee. I think that the, if these recommendations were adopted, they would be trialed over the really in the next six months or so over the coming year. And that would give us a very good idea of how robust they are and whether additional adjustments would need to be made in the coming years. So I think it does give the town, you know, sort of the best chance to sort of take this up right away and and move forward in that regard.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Matt?
I think that it it seems a little logistically challenging to have two joint meetings between the school committee and the select board. And I would recommend that we only have one joint meeting. And that we could ratify the final plan in December in separate meetings, the select board and the school committee. Because what I would assume is after doing the draft plan and the revised plan, that there should be very few surprises, that the issues that remain will be clear to most people and that we can separately ratify the results. I just don't see that much added value at the conclusion of the process to us all be sitting together in the same room. I do see some benefit at the beginning where we're all seeing the plan for the first time. And perhaps there's some trading back and forth or whatever you want to do. So that's my.
Good suggestion.
Sorry, I had a similar reaction for slightly different reasons. You know, in the recommendations in the process for that spelled out in terms of the enhanced process, there are some actionable items that need to be implemented in terms of, you know, superintendent meeting with the town manager, et cetera. And so I like the idea that Elise has put forward in terms of having a pilot lead year to see to what extent without some external process monitoring that that the principals, in this case, this superintendent and town manager to kick this off, would begin to build this into their calendar and keep to the recommended timeline, because there's so much that's contingent on this timeline in terms of how we act on this. I do think that typically December is a very intense and busy month, just because of all the holidays that people are celebrating. And even if meetings go on, people's attention is really.
Well, it's usually the town meeting preview, although it sounds like the whole calendar may move back in the future.
Yeah, okay. So I I like the idea of the pilot for a year. And I also like Matt's suggestion about eliminating the second meeting in December.
One other point I meant, well, I'm sorry to jump back in, is that the issues that Elise raised, you know, and that came out of Finance Committee in our previous review of this, I think it are a lower, lower level of detail. I mean, in other words, I mean, in other words, the, the, the specific content of the capital plan, the, the kind of recommendations that we're suggesting that, you know, we would perhaps accept tonight are at a higher level of really the process, you know, and the overall objectives. It's not really about, okay, the plan needs to include offsetting revenues, you know. That's, that's not at the level of those presentations tonight, is that?
Right, I'd like to, well, that's a good question, Matt, and then Henry, your comment. What we want to do tonight is see if the Select Board would like to adopt those five main recommendations. And we can put them back on the screen if you need to. And then if so, we can talk a little about the calendar. But we're definitely not going to be talking about any particular project and how we're going to have offsets to it. That will come when we have those meetings. And thank you for bringing that up, Elise and Matt. It will also be coming up while we do the middle school focused meeting, have an entire meeting on that. Henry, you had a comment.
Yeah, we, we went through this proposal in some detail. Last meeting or the one before, I think?
The 7th of June, yes.
And it was very favorably received. And, and I think it's, it's a, it's a marvelous approach to the problem. And the problem, you know, the difficulty with such, with, with these, these studies, these, is that they really do not get implemented.
Correct.
It's a piece, it's a, it's a, it's a report, you put in the file, you have all the best intentions in the world of following it, but, you know, then real life intervenes.
Right.
And certainly it would help if the Select Board and the FinCom actually made a real commitment to implement this plan. And even with the details that don't seem to make sense now, because the, the details are part of the discipline. And my concern is if we treat it as a pilot, the question is if there are problems that develop or we really do not implement it very well, what do we do then? If you say it's a pilot, but then if the pilot shows deficiencies, you still have to move on from there. I, especially since we are facing within the next year or so, the most, you know, the most major capital debt adventure for town of the hundred or more, and I think it's more, million dollars of debt financing that we are being asked to deal with. I think that we need to be quite concrete about imposing a discipline on the implementation of this or some very similar plan so that we are not blown in the wind by all the competing political forces of getting different jobs done and not really paying enough attention to how we're going to pay for them. And I know that it's a separate item on the agenda, which is the continuation of the, of the task force in effect. And I know that the task force itself would be happy to be relieved of the burden of continuing this. But I would love to see the task force in some aspect, whether it be an executive committee or the designation of one or two of its members to monitor, to monitor the compliance with this and hold our feet to the fire. Because I don't think anybody is going to hold our feet to the fire unless the people who came up with the plan, who have an interest in it and own it, are able to keep us honest.
That's an excellent comment, Henry. I will say personally that I was on the committee. And if the Select Board votes to adopt it, I intend to, for this year at least, and hopefully going forward, I intend to get it done this year and, and hold our feet to the fire. I'm really happy to hear you say that.
I intend to put it in my proposal for goals.
All right. Stephen?
Yeah, I think you make a great point. I, I mean, Adam, as a member of the task force, I, I don't know that we still need a task force to do this. I think the strength of the task force's recommendations are that it has to be built, is that it's to bake into our, our annual schedule. The town has a very rigid annual schedule to do town business. And that's why if you do the warrant timeline, you bake in this tier three joint meeting discussion, there's going to be, because of the middle school project you just referenced, Henry, there's going to be a number of years, few, first few years anyway, where it's going to be maybe an update on our facilities assessment, maybe a summary of some of the projects that have come in the past. But it's, but, you know, it's going to be basically a check-in until the next big project comes along, and then we're going to start having those detailed discussions and those joint meetings. And I, I think one thing to talk that length about is that when there are big projects, like tier three debt exclusion type projects, a committee just for that project gets formed that works through a lot of the details in the financing. And we think that that'll probably continue to happen in the future. And so I think the, the forced discipline, if you will, the forced attention to it is by building it into the annual town meeting and budget prep calendar. And I think, like I said, that was something that Terry and Carl Packard fought hard for. And I think that that was one of the strengths of the recommendations.
Right, and let, let me, I agree with Stephen except for one kind of thing, which is I don't see the first year as only a check-in. I also see it as letting the public know that in year five or year eight or, or after year 10, we do foresee this project, that project, the other project. We don't have definite numbers on them yet, but they're out there. We don't, we want to take away the surprises. Nobody likes the surprises. So I think it's very valuable that the public sees what's coming up, even though year eight might change to year seven or year 10, but they see it's on the horizon.
Yeah, I would hope that we get our baseline plan this coming year.
Yep, that's the intent.
Yeah, but they have a 10-year horizon.
Right, and it's updated. Okay. Other comments? I think we could take a little bit of public comment on this, just very briefly, and then we'll see if the Select Board is ready to vote. Are there some people from the public who want to comment? Jeremy or Chris, do you know?
Christine, you're on the screen. I don't know, Christine, do you have a comment that you would share?
I'm sorry, I'm on my, my, my phone from my car, so I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're loud in there.
Oh, good, okay. So this is Chris Reynolds, Chair of the FinCom, I'm 15 Captain Miles Lane in Concord. So I'm speaking for myself. So I'm very positive about the recommendations. And I echo what Terry just said in terms of one of the biggest benefits is sunshine and disclosure for the public of what's coming up. And in particular, one of the things that I was happy with in the recommendations is, is that it included this concept of multi-year projects and accumulating those to the extent that they meet the tier three criteria. And I think that that's one of the things that I heard from some of the public comment that people were concerned about was that they, just what Terry said, that they're, they don't want surprises. So if something is explained at town meeting to be X, and perhaps for very good reason, it becomes Y, making sure that we go back and connect the dots and explain to people, yes, that project is now growing in terms of size and cost because of these reasons. But to connect the dots for people each year through this process so that it doesn't become a surprise or something that people forget about, and then it appears to be a surprise, even though it may have been intentional from the folks who were sponsoring the project. So I support the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments, brief comments from the public?
There are no Henry's, no.
All right, seeing none. Does the board want to take one vote to adopt all of the recommendations, or do you want to go through one at a time?
The comment that I made earlier was substantive with regards to, you know, the recommendation talks about these joint meetings.
Okay, why don't we put that back on the screen? Because I don't.
We may need to.
Okay, I don't think that that is exactly true. But let's, Jeremy, if we could put page, I think, seven back on there. Right.
Oh, I see. Okay, so yeah, the, the, the comments about the joint meetings were at a lower level. They weren't in the A through E.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take that up next. Let's see if we want to adopt these five recommendations. The first one, that we have a process, next page, defines what a very large project is and that it's formally integrated into the policies and practices. Next page is, we have a debt template updated annually and we have citizen input showing the priorities and the climate evaluations.
Right, so we don't, there's not the specific recommendations here in the A through E about those joint meetings.
Right, but we will talk about that in a minute. Let's, let's see first if we want to adopt.
Yeah, so I guess I would move that we accept the recommendations A through E as written in our packet this evening for the capital, long-term capital planning process is the recommendations of the committee.
Okay.
Second?
Right, all in favor? Okay, great. Now, in terms of the timing, that's right. Okay, so next meeting, as you know, next week is July 4th, we are not meeting. The following week, Stephen and his team are, and Chris and every, Carmen and everyone is already working on a calendar. So one of the things we're going to be doing hopefully on July 12th is voting the date of town meeting and all of the associated, as much as we can, of the associated deadlines. And along with that, we can put in dates for these three meetings.
Okay.
So the December meeting now may turn out that, maybe you're right, the Select Board can vote, School Committee can vote. If they vote, vote the same thing or else.
Right.
And, and so we can discuss that now some more if you'd like, but we're going to be doing the entire.
Yeah, we don't need to discuss it now.
Can I make a comment on that? I, I think that especially with these, these large expenditures that are coming, that involve the School Committee, it's important for there to be a lot of, take every opportunity to have a direct communication between this board, the FinCom, the School Committee. And it may have some inconveniences, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to do, or at least to aspire to. And so I would, I, I think that we ought to at least accept that as a serious possibility. And I think that if we do build it in, at least it gives us a little bit of leverage to get the attention of the School Committee. Because what has happened with the middle schools is that all of the attention has been devoted to the structure of the project and to, but very little of it has been devoted to how it's going to be paid.
Right.
And so I think that I, I would not want to wash out of the, our vote the, the importance of having communication between the three boards I mentioned. I also would suggest that with regard to the next motion, the next item on the agenda, that we, that we continue that vote until our next meeting, the one, the July meeting, that we not, we not move forward on the issue of dissolving the, the capital, capital planning task force until we have, until our next meeting, so we have time to give it more thought.
I see, okay.
I mean, I guess my question to you, Henry, is what would you anticipate them being able to do in the future? I guess, you know, because I would, I would hope that we, we have some very capable people on this task force that I think would be nice to be able to assign to other committees going forward. We're in a season of reassignments.
Well, I think that's an excellent point, man. And I think maybe I think that's an excellent point, and I hope that we would then have the courage to go forward and do that.
I think we have to be the committee going forward, in effect, you know. And, and so I, I'd recommend it. Go ahead.
I think that the task force is ready to be dissolved. They, they were supposed to meet for six months. It got prolonged under COVID, it went 18 or 20 months. And there's some burnout factor happening. So I think they are looking for the Select Board and the FinCom and School Committee to step up now and adopt it. And however, I think Henry's making some good points, too. I will say that this December meeting, the way I was envisioning it in a, you know, in year one at least, it will probably last five minutes. If the September meeting lasts a while.
Why I wondered, why do we have everybody covered in?
Well, yeah.
But hey, it, it's okay, I'm fine with stepping back from that and just going with it in this first year.
Yeah, but we don't have to decide that tonight.
Yeah.
Um, what about Henry's suggestion of, are we ready to disband the committee and the selectmen take charge now, or should we wait? What's your pleasure?
I think based on what you said earlier, Terry, about your commitment to, your personal commitment, having been a part of the task force of, of kind of shepherding this on behalf of the Select Board, would lead me to go ahead and disband the task force. That, along with other, you know, commitment of the other finance committee and the school committee.
Right, and Matt wants to put it in the goals.
And Matt wants to put it in the goals.
Right, I, I do feel there's strong support from the Select Board and the Town Manager. If we were a split board, three to two, that'd be like a whole different thing. But other thoughts on this?
Susan said what I wanted to say.
I just want to thank, not lose the opportunity to thank you, Terry, and Elise for chairing this task force and for all the, all the, like you said, 18 months of work or 22 months, whatever it was, way longer than you anticipated. And thank you all for, for doing that.
Elise was incredible at herding the cats. She was really great. We were very lucky to have her.
One of the most important rules of life is that when everybody agrees, stop talking.
All right, so in that light, I would like to move that the work of the Capital Planning Task Force is complete and the committee is hereby disbanded.
Is there a second?
Great, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks for your words.
Thank you so much, Elise, and the entire committee. Thank you very much for all your work. And good luck with that beautiful grandchild.
Thank you all, and on behalf of the task force, thank you to the Board of Select, the Select Board for having us consider this. It was quite a rewarding experience. See you soon.
Thank you. All right.
I think we saw.
I think Matt's got some plans for it, too. Okay, we are now ready to discuss finalizing the process and the forms for the Town Manager evaluation. And I'd like to do this in two parts. The first part, I'd like to talk about the Select Board form, which was in the packet. And just very briefly, I've incorporated all of the comments I received from other board members. And I took many wordsmithing segments out of the candidate profile, which many of you suggested, I mean, we had some professionals draft that candidate profile, and it's really well-written. So it was a great suggestion that several of you made. I took some of our wordsmithing and substituted it, used the better wordsmithing from the candidate profile. The second thing I want to say is that in this draft, the boxes at the bottom for the comments are much too small. And I want And I want to say a couple of things about that. Uh, Chris Carmody was very helpful in, um, getting the foremounting done, though. When you put the word draft across it in the, um, watermark, and there was some other technical issue, it, it's constricting the, um, boxes. So please feel free to use as many pages as you need. Like on page one, there's certainly no word comment. That's not intentional. We want comments. Um, and then, uh, thirdly, I want to say that the process will be, if we approve this tonight, that you will bring, um, you will check off the boxes, fill in the comments, and bring it in a sealed envelope, in a, a drop box on the left side of the townhouse, addressed to me, or you can bring it directly to Jeremy in a sealed envelope with my name on it. Nobody will see it except me, and I will consolidate them all as Linda did last year and Mike did the year before. I will write a consolidated narrative with this and the staff part, which we're going to go over in a minute. So, um.
When would you like this?
Well, um, our first, that's a great question. First of all, are there some more changes that need to be made or comments?
I'm happy with this.
So I, I appreciate all the time that you've taken to integrate all this, so thank you for doing that.
No firsthand.
Yes, I know firsthand. Um, there were just a couple of spots where there, there may have been intended redundancy, and so I'll give you one example that I recall, and that was, um, you know, we will be informed about progress on, um,
Which, which letter is?
Collective bargaining, well, that's why I'm giving you the example. It just so happens that it, at least one of the citations is under management section B.
Okay.
Number six.
Okay.
Um, where it talks about informing and advising the select board on appropriate matters related to court bargaining. There were maybe one or two other places where that same concept was, um, and I didn't know where they were, but they are in here.
Oh, okay, that's, maybe, could you send that to me then? That might be an error. I felt, I thought I consolidated them all into this one place.
Okay, so I, I didn't know if it was an intentional redundancy.
Yeah, if you can send that to me, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Where that is.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there might have been one other example, but other than that, I thought you did a great job of integrating the two.
Okay, well, just send me that one and I'll.
I, I love.
Any other, um, comments, questions, changes?
I think you were asked for a date, if you want.
Yeah, I know, um, let me put off that question for a minute. I want to do part two of this, because it's sort of all interdependent. So there is a staff feedback component also, and I've been working with Amy Foley, as you know. We had a conference call the other day with a group called Conference Consulting, and they're actually out of Alberta, Canada. They're not from Congress. Um, they're one of the ICMA consulting groups that does this, and the devil was in the details. So basically what happened was, it was, we were a round peg trying to fit in their square hole, and the $500 mushroomed into $8,000. Um, so this was because they're going to develop a whole system and do beta testing, and, you know, after we listened to all of this, both Amy and I thought this was really not exactly what we're looking for, but it could have really good potential in a future year if we want to do a 360 for the entire town. So we're back to the options of either sealed envelopes for the staff in an anonymous drop box, and I'll, I would be the only one with a key to it, or came up with this other idea that we could do the survey monkey, but it would be routed to nobody in Congress. It would go to a paralegal at Labor Council's office or outside council's office. And what would happen then is the staff would have an easier time filling it out. They could just check off the boxes in the survey monkey, and it would be easier for me because it would all come in compiled. I'd get only the summary data, and that would be basically what we're looking for. We don't want to know, um, that, you know, Joe said this and Jane said that. We want to know the consolidated thing. So we don't have right now full confirmation from Labor Council's office, but we think that it's going to be well under $1,000. We have to pay for the survey monkey license, and a few hours of paralegal, might be $510,000. So what I'm looking for from the board, um, once again, our idea is that this would not be on the town email server. It would not be stored in the town server or on the email system. It's stored in the cloud, and if somebody really wants to, they can use their personal computer even. They can use any computer they want to fill out the survey monkey, and it would go right to outside council, and all I'd get would be the consolidation. So it would preserve the anonymity, and what I'm looking for from the board is an okay to let Amy and I finish up on these details so that the board doesn't have to get all involved in the weeds of, you know, which council it is and da, da, da. And if we can't get any of them to agree, that will go, then we'll go with the sealed envelopes and drop.
But it would have to go to Eva's personal email.
No, no, they can use the town computer.
Everything that is, anything that goes out from the town server is available.
Well, that's what I thought. That's not true, though.
Yeah, if it's a personnel evaluation, it's not subject to.
No, I'm not talking about open meeting law. I'm talking about the electronic, the electronic reality is that, I mean, I deal with employment law, and I tell my people all the time, do not ever communicate with me on your institutional server because you, what is on.
If there's keystroke logging or something, but I don't know that.
What's on the institutional server is available to the management.
But, but that's not, oh, first of all, it's not anymore. It's stored in the cloud.
Because the survey monkey is, is, you know, when you enter, you're in your web browser with a secure connection to the, the site, and so there is no local storage unless there's keystroke monitoring.
Okay, is that.
That's right.
Yeah.
So it's.
That's how it operates.
But to be absolutely totally sure, if you still don't feel comfortable, you don't have to use the town computer. You can use your personal computer, your friend's computer, or whatever, because it's going to survey them.
So what about the authentication side of it? I mean, anonymity is one side, but ensuring that there are actual town employees that are filling this in.
Okay, that's a good question.
Then that there are individual town employees and not the same one three times.
Okay, that's a good thing. Thank you for bringing that up. So I guess what I'd like to know is, is this, are we, Amy and I have the questions drafted. You've seen them, um.
I mean, these are problems that have been solved, I'm sure.
Are, are we good to go on this? Um, and if we are, then I'll be able to answer Susan's question because of little. If we're not good to go, and we have to come back to the board again on July 12th, then, then we're not, we're not ready to go yet.
So what questions are we talking about?
All right, for the staff, okay, you had a draft in the previous packet, and, um, what I've done with that is I've put them into categories to erase the duplication. So there's, you know, like a management category, there's a communication category, you know, like that.
So it's basically those questions.
The ones that you've seen already, yes, yes.
And some of them you took off of ours that we have discussed.
Yes, most of them are. They're from two groups of questions that we have had trouble answering in the past, and we've all put NA because we didn't know what to do. That's what we need the staff to fill out. Um, is everybody comfortable letting Amy and I, um, finish up the weeds on this?
Yeah.
Matt, do you have something, sir?
I'm fine with that. I, I prefer this approach because the others could lead to a further delay in the process, and this seems very, you know, as long as you can resolve, like I said, the authentication, you know, issues, I, I think that.
Okay, so why don't we shoot for, um, July 9th? Since that's the date for the goals, we'll else, we'll have that, it's the same date for this, make it simple. Everything that we do then, that we may end up doing both of these items at that focus meeting, depending how quickly we can get the staff part done.
We'll have to get the revised questionnaire to us promptly, so, you know, the, the real.
Okay, so this questionnaire. That's right.
Taken out of it, and that's those corrections that Linda mentioned.
That's right. Those are the only two corrections. These boxes are still going to be too small. Please use as many pages as you want. That's.
That's just.
Yes, yes, but, right, but like, for example, on the next page, if this box is too small, you know, it's obvious, really, but, okay. All right, any other questions on that? All right, thank you very much. Um, we are ready for an initial, what I called an initial discussion of the 2025 Executive Committee, and.
Terry, excuse me, before you jump into that, what, was there another part of the process in terms of the self-evaluation that you were going to? That was, um, the original, um, thing you just figured out last week or the week before.
Okay, that's a really good question, Linda. So help me recall that, because I recall, I think there were two goals that.
But this was, um, for this past year.
Right.
The part of the process included asking the town manager to fill out a self-evaluation, to run a self-evaluation of his experience.
Right.
For the past year, uh, and that informed the evaluation process.
Okay, and I recall that that had two goals with it. That's a different, that's a different. Okay. Um, what do you think, Mr. Manager? Do you want to write a self-evaluation? Um, this, in this next week that we can use when we're filling out our questionnaires?
Well, does it even have to be in this next week?
No, well, before the July 9th, right?
So, so the intention of that, um, including that in the process, if I may, um, was as another piece of the total evaluation package.
Oh, okay, right, all right.
You see what the town, the town manager, um, due the year.
Right.
Uh, he had an opportunity to affirm the things that he felt good about. He had an opportunity to talk about challenges or whatever, and that was about a page and a half or two pages, as I, as I recall. Um, and, and the power of that is to have that done early in the process.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Before we then do our.
That's why I'm saying.
But not necessarily be given to the rest of us, that it would go to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it would go to you.
Yeah, I, my recollection from last year was that we didn't see Stephen's self-evaluation.
That's true, until the end.
Until the end.
Okay.
You have on all the informations.
Um, what do you think?
Well, there's, I mean, there's two schools of thought on this. You can have my self-evaluation in advance, and I view things, and they put some context into how you view, you know, come of the past year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, or you can have it run concurrently in the, in the work process.
Right.
And kind of manage it at the end, and then Terry does her consolidation. She could then plug in thematically where, and maybe I will use, I, I, we'll talk offline about what form I should be using for all that, because last year it was a memo that I had prepared.
A memo, I think, is fine.
So then you can get, that can be concurrent. I mean, to be honest with you, I, I have no, I, I just, I, I'm not going to be present for the July 12th meeting, so if we're targeting a discussion about the March 12th, I would.
No, we're not. It's going to be the 19th or the 26th, but what we need to do is we need to, um, have all the documents to me, you know, early enough to make that packet.
So I guess my, my final take on this is I think we spent an awful lot of time remotely together um, over the past, you know, 12 months, and so I'm comfortable with your approach.
Okay.
This is the board's preference.
One thing that's typically included in a self-evaluation is the employee's own, um, suggestion for the goals.
Right.
For the goals and objectives for the, for the coming year.
Yeah.
And I think that would, that would be a great assistance as well.
Well, I think, I, I accept that, I think, what, how, how we've done goals is we've worked as a group, SMT has developed, we've developed a shared set of goals versus my own, I don't really, I guess it's last time, I don't really see individual goals for myself. I see goals for the organization, departments working together, and I, and I won't have the opportunity, just a much bigger process than self-evaluation. I do think, Henry, that, that there needs to be a discussion in the presentation about town, town managers, like organizational goals.
Yep.
Uh, at a future thing, but I guess I look at the self-evaluations and look back, and then if, in the next phase, it's going to be a look forward into the next, into the goals that, um.
So where, where, where. Okay, sorry, I, I just was thinking that, you know, we are it right now poised to be able to start this evaluation the very first meeting of the new fiscal year, which is kind of unprecedentedly fast. I, I think it's.
No, no, we're not going to be ready on the 12th of July to do this.
Okay, well, then that case, then he has a little bit more time.
Right.
Right?
Right.
I would say that I, I typically find that self-evaluations precede the board evaluations. In other words, that you do provide that context upfront, and I think it is very valuable to get that upfront as opposed to run it concurrently. Because I think if you run it concurrently, you end up with this
Right.
kind of like, you know, I don't know, he said, she said, or, or also just a parallel universe type of a situation, and I don't think we want that.
Okay, that's a good point. So that's why it depends on your time.
So I would give Stephen more time, and I also wouldn't insist upon having the goals, especially considering the, you know, what he just said, uh, in the past, last year, we set our goals, which of course provide a lot of his goals as well, so that's important, too. And, um, and it, the SMT goals came after that.
Right.
As I recall last year, so.
The SMT goals were all of that.
Plus, of these things, yeah.
That's right, yeah. So I guess the question, Stephen, is with everything else you have to do, do you think you can get a self-evaluation memo, however you want it formatted, to us in a week or 10 days?
Um, I will do my best. I will, I, I understand you guys are on time on your, and I'll do my best to get it, too.
Okay.
It took, as Linda will tell you, it took a while to come together, not because it ended up being a page and a half, but it was a pretty condensed page and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so the board is just a little, little patient with me, I think.
Okay.
It's been, it's been quite a year.
Would you like more, I mean, I think it should be what you want it to be. It doesn't, I don't think there's a limit to how long it is going to take.
No, I, I think sometimes less is more, I think was something that does, Susan. It's, it's more really, takes it, the, the creative process, if you will, to think through what happened and what are the highlights, and I often I talk to members of SMT, I'll, I'll talk to Chris and Jeremy, who, I'll do my work every day, like, how do we think this went, get some feedback, and so it's just this, the final document is almost a, you know, the tip of the iceberg, and the rest of the iceberg is, is, takes a little bit to put together, but I hear the board loud and clear, and if, if it's the consensus of the board that the self-evaluation should come first, then I will, I'll get done and do it to as soon as possible.
Remember, Park is usual.
What is that?
The amount of work it spends to fill the time available to do it.
Right.
So faster's better.
That's a good point.
So faster's better.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is true for board meetings, too.
But it has been a year like no others, so.
Yeah.
What I, what I have found is that the amount of work constantly exceeds the time available.
It just feels that way, yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so we have agreement to proceed, and, um, Stephen's going to do his best. And hopefully we will have his self-evaluation before we have to write ours, but it may end up being concurrent, um.
Well, we can, we can, we can make that happen by saying we're not going to do it, do ours until we get his. I mean, that's in our control.
Right, as long as it's, you know, it's soon, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it's on, it's at the top of the list. I, I hear you guys loud and clear.
Okay, super. All right, fantastic. Okay. So, um, speaking of time, look at that, we're on time, incredible. All right, so, um, we have next an initial discussion of the 2025 Executive Committee, and um, Henry has done quite a bit of work. Thank you, Henry, and, um, we'll be leading the discussion on this. But I have called it an initial discussion, and I want to thank Henry for reminding us to get going on this quickly, and so. And so here we are, we're going to start talking about it. Let's see how far we can get tonight, and we will, I'm sure, be continuing at many future meetings. So, Henry, I understand that the first thing that you want to do, I guess, is address the charge.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's, that's, that's important, and I think the, I feel that certain ways of approaching this are, are, are important because of the, of two factors. One is where we are now, which is four years away from the event. It seems like a very long time. But 50 years ago, the 200th, the town had a committee fully formed and in operation eight years before the event.
Wow.
And this is, and I am, I am glad that the first draft of the charge did clearly, that the, that the board adopted clearly stated that the town wanted an event of the proportions and the magnitude of the event that celebrated the 200th. And so I think we're behind the curve on this, especially since the organizational, the organizational aspect of this, where in 1975, we had 6,000 invited guests, 125 visitors to the town. We had 500 volunteer.
25,000, 25,000, isn't it?
Thousand, yes. Hundred, and we had 500 volunteer law enforcement, as well as the National Guard. We had the President of the United States as the honored guest, with ambassadors from foreign countries and so on. Because although we take our, we may tend to take our heritage, or at least the heritage of this place we live in for granted, it is, you know, it is kind of like the, as one well-known prophet said, a prophet is without honor in his own country. And so, but it is, it is a big deal. And to give you an idea of where we stand on this, I was talking to somebody the other day, a man who was, lived in this town for several generations, if that seems like, but he, his family has been in this town for many generations. And we were, we were talking about debt financing of all things, but he mentioned to me that he had inquiries from the Concord Independent Battery as to whether or not we were going to be interested in having them do anything for that event, because they had been getting requests from other towns and other places to provide their, you know, what they do elsewhere. And so we don't want to, you know, because everybody else seems to be planning well in advance. We don't want to lose opportunities because we're coming in too late.
Right.
With all the people that we need to get involved in this process, whether it be our legislators, whether it be the President of the United States, whose calendar I've already started to deal with. And we need to get going on this. And while the original charge was focused on putting together a representative committee, which at some point it will be a good thing to do, I think the initial structure needs to be an executive committee, as, as it is called, one that has the skills in management and finance and organization and contacts and so on, that can effectively organize a very, very large and important.
Great.
Project.
So thanks again for waking us up to this. Let's get going. And you've drafted up a new draft. So the previous draft was approved by the board February 8th, 2021. And in your packet tonight, Henry has drafted draft number four, and I have some comments on the new draft, but I will. What comments do, okay, Matt?
Well, I guess, you know, we already have a charge that we approved. So I guess I look at this and I think, well, there are many things in here that are suitable. For example, the latter half of this paragraph about, you know, the kind of objectives or meaning that this should have that sound well-suited to deliberations that such a committee would make, not our charge to the committee. And so I really wonder about revisiting our charge at this stage, and would say, let's get the committee to work and start working on these things. And I, I didn't see a compelling need to rewrite the charge. I thought that the most substantive change that was suggested was reducing the membership of the committee. But as I look back at the committee structures in, in, you know, 1969, there was a larger committee than the one that we even originally proposed that was in place. So I, I don't necessarily agree that we need to revisit this at this point, that what we need to do is appoint a member and make sure that that committee stands up, and maybe they can come back to us with tweaks that they would like.
Okay.
But I, I don't see, I mean, I think that there's lots of good material here, and, and I think it would be great work for the committee to do. But I, I don't see that we have public comment on the charge. I don't see why we would be bringing it right back up and changing the structure and the goals of the committee.
Okay, Linda, Susan, Susan?
Yeah, I just had a question. What is in the packet that Henry distributed? This, this charge is not the same as this.
It is the, it is the text of the, that was made a red line, what was distributed, but it's a, it's a clean copy of the, of the revised version.
But these, you know, this point and charge subcommittees section is, you know, this, it's only two lines in this draft we were given. First, this description, so there, there, at least those two, I jumped out, and the number four and number five under tasks are much larger than what's in the, in the version that we got.
This is, this is the, this is the original charge. This is the one with, this is the.
The red, yeah, okay.
The red line.
So they're, okay, that's where they are.
So this is, so I gave you a clean copy of the red line copy. And to me, the most important, the most important change is the description of the skills and attributes of the people in the executive committee. And the fact that the original charge calls for one from the school committee, one from the, there are one from this, and two from that, and three from the other, which is, first of all, it's, which at some point, we may want to have all of those different organizations represented in the subcommittees. But I think it's very, will interfere with the ability to put together an effective executive committee by having to deal with the restrictions on the membership that are in the original charge.
Okay, are you talking about, are you talking about the subcommittee section?
No.
The, the regular committee section?
Well, no, in the original charge.
Right.
In the original charge, if not in the red line, there was a.
There were 12 members.
12 members, and it says like, select board two, school committee one, town something, which.
Oh, that didn't show up in the red line, that.
No, because those were.
Oh, if they're deleted, they're not showing up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ah. Okay, well, what, let's discuss that then. So you've changed it from select board, school committee, business community, and all this kind of stuff.
Yeah, right.
To executive administrative planning skills, knowledge of structure of town, et cetera.
Yeah, right.
Okay, what do people think about that? So I, I personally think we need both.
I do, too.
Well, I, I agree, too, but I think that that representation should be in the subcommittees, not in the executive management committee. I think there needs to be a management committee, which will organize a thing, and then have subcommittees. The subcommittees have been things, for instance, public safety. I want to see the police chief and the fire chief, okay? And maybe representative of the National Guard on that, that subcommittee. There was an arts and culture committee, and there was a educational subcommittee. And the school committee should be, should be represented on the educational subcommittee, and maybe people from the, from FOPAC and some of the other, Emerson umbrella should be on the culture and arts committee and so on.
Okay.
Because those people should be distributed according to the various activities that are part of the plan that we're hoping to reproduce.
Okay.
And so I don't think that a representative of the school committee is necessarily the right person to work on how we organize the event and who we call in and who we invite.
Right, right.
And so on, and so on. And so that's my idea, is that we would have a, an executive committee, which would be a smaller group. There would be the managers, who would then establish subcommittees, as I have, as I have listed as potential subcommittees, that would have the appropriate representation on them that related to the function of that subcommittee, rather than just having, saying that on the management committee, we need somebody
Okay.
from the Concord Museum.
Right, okay, so that's clear. What do others think about that idea?
I think the most important role in the first year is defining the overall scope and character of the celebration, which should be inclusive of the skills and perspectives of all of those parties that we, I think, took care to identify. That, yeah, you know, people with financial acumen is important, but if they're the people running the show, and they're just subcommittees and people that are saying, okay, here's going to be an arts display, that's going to change the nature of the celebration. And I, I don't think it's about that. I think it's really about, let's figure out, as a town, and all those perspectives in the town, what kind of celebration we want to have. And then, yeah, we've got folks with managerial, project management, financial, and, you know, governmental relations skills that can make it happen.
I don't think we have, I don't, I don't think we have a year to figure that out.
No, we don't. We, we can do that out quickly. We have to.
Well, that's what Matt was saying, put that together and spend a year.
Oh.
No, I said that's the most important, important output come from that first year.
I think what Matt is saying, if I have this right, is that we take this representation of these communities, like school community, business community, et cetera. And within those communities, we think we can find people who have this expertise that we also need, Henry, that you might identify. Like financial, contacts with people, historic knowledge, that, is this what you're saying, Matt?
Right, we need to have our discretion as the select board in appointing appropriate individuals from those communities that can actually help get this thing done, but I think we have a wealth of talent in town that, that can do that.
But I think we also want kind of broad picture, people that aren't necessarily just, you know, representing the schools or.
Right.
But have that executive level functioning that Henry's describing. And Matt, what you're saying is that might be, you know.
Well, we have a member for event planning and logistics, a member of the business community. Public reenactment and public celebrations community, committee. I, I, I guess I see individuals that are identified, community leaders with fundraising experience. I mean, all of those skills are represented here.
And those are the ones that I have. Those are the qualifications I've given in my revision for the.
Right, and so you're saying cut out the rest and just have it be about that, and that's what I'm objecting to.
Well, I don't think that the people who have those skills are necessarily devoid of any of the other qualities.
And vice versa.
And vice versa.
If you're representing the school committee, you might have great financial or event planning experience, or, or whatever, right? Or historic knowledge. Stephen?
Yeah, I think, I think Henry raised some great points in the red lines, and I think, I think that they are places that the committee contemplated by the approved charge. I think that that 12-member committee will get to some of the places that Henry's articulated, but they'll be able to get there with, and then be able to develop a structure that's iterative as opposed to prescribed. And then the other part of this is, if the town representative of this 12-member committee is the town manager or designated, then all of the other town employees come along with that person. So there's going to be times where the police chief or fire chief is going to come in and report to this 12-person committee about what, what's happening, preparation, things like that. A subcommittee may form out something like that, but I think if you get too many subcommittees, it becomes, it becomes pretty unwieldy in terms of scheduling and things like that, when you really have, there may be working groups. I mean, if you have a fundraising committee, the fundraising committee will likely need to be a friends-type committee just because of, you know, privacy considerations for donors and things like that. So, you know, I, I think there's, there's a lot.
What I, what I've done is, you may want to think about that some more in light of how, how this was managed during the eight years that, eight years that we planned the bicentennial. Those are copies of the town report sections from each of those seven years. It gives you an idea of what was done and how it was done, and it was, had some problems, but it worked.
I, I did review that, the trove of information, of historical information. I did get there, I did kind of take, and this was months ago, and then I did dive down a rabbit hole, because it was so fascinating, Henry, I think, the, the level of involvement, the level of, the types of activities that they did. I mean, there are things that I don't see, you know, that, that, say, the community would be into this time around. And I just think the way we do business is, is in many ways very different.
It's been 50 years.
Yeah. I mean, you mentioned public safety. I mean, that's just, there's, there really is no, I don't think, any comparable way to say, here's how we handle public safety, other than when the president arrives, the Secret Service takes over, and that's it. This really, I mean, things are just so different in terms of how we do business. The intent of that work, and the intent, I think, of what was, the charge that the select board approved, is they are lined up, it's just a little more efficient, I think. But I do, I guess I don't, I think we're gonna, 50 years from now, people are gonna read what we did here and say, you know, wow, that was, they spent a lot more time.
That was 2026.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Linda, do you have one?
So, you know, I, I certainly understand Henry's take on this in terms of the spirit and the scope of this celebration is national, and it will be statewide, national, as well as local. And, and there are some things that have to get off the ground immediately.
Yeah.
That's understood. However, you know, we're operating in a timeframe here. This is a select board-appointed committee. We have an obligation to the public and also to the times in terms of, you know, the inclusion, inclusionary aspect of this. And I think at the time when we spent a lot of time and got feedback from the public on the representatives who were going to be on the committee, at least for some of us, we were already thinking that some of these positions, as Matt's pointed out, too, in terms of some of these categories, were going to be, hopefully, people would step up, or we would recommend people for those positions who had that broad reach, not only in terms of their vision, but in terms of who they knew, their influence, who to get to.
Right, their role.
Yeah, and, and, and helping pull all this together at both the macro level as well as the, you know. as well as the, you know, some of the more details and the the hands-on activities that we want to involve the entire community. So so in that sense, I'm trying to meld where Henry was trying to go with this with where we are in this day and age, I think.
Right.
But the other thing I would say is that when I also read sort of the, some of the language about subcommittees would be appointed by the executive committee. And, you know, there's some issues there in terms of this is a select board committee.
I agree.
And I was also concerned that we don't get ourselves into a bit of a soup here in terms of when the town manager has the opportunity to say, yes, I'll send my person for X committee, or I will release them or make them available to be part of that. You know, I think that will be a cooperative
Right.
effort between the town manager and whoever is staffing and manning this committee.
Right, so I think, okay, so that's a good segue to some of the thoughts that I have. So first of all, one of the immediate things that we need to do is ask the public, please, to send in green cards for the committee and the subcommittees. We are now actively recruiting, so.
We should go and try to recruit.
Yes, we should all be out recruiting. So that's number one. Number of two, I agree with your word melding. I think that what we need to do is kind of meld in the membership section where it used to say, it's on page three, the membership section, and it used to say, select boards, school committee, and this one, that one, the other one. And now Henry has executive, structure, finance, et cetera. I think we need both. And so I also have some other comments too. So like, for example, there's one part about native and black Concordians that was changed to those whose roles have not received sufficient recognition. I would like to say both. So instead of getting into all this kind of wordsmithing by committee in a meeting, what I'm going to suggest is that we each take some time with this now and mark up, since I have quite a bit of things marked up, and I think some of you do too. And everybody can mark up. And Henry, we can send them to you or it can go to Jeremy, but one person to consolidate it.
I will consolidate.
All right. And then we'll come back. But in the meantime, since we're not meeting for two weeks, we want to get those green cards in. I want everybody to apply.
We don't have green cards.
We have them online and we are going to put QR codes on the physical cards, right? Can we do that?
We haven't sorted that out yet, but I'm sure we can figure out.
Or if you want to get a green card at the library, you can pick one up, right?
No, not as far as I know.
I'm talking with the library tomorrow about getting them, the physical cards. And then
Thank you.
we do, again, have green cards developed online. If you go to the board and committee membership page, you can fill out that.
Right, you go to how do I? And then it says board and committee. That's where you go. And if you have a question, please call Jeremy and he will guide you through it. We really want.
It would be helpful to actually have a heap of green cards.
Right.
If you kept them.
Jeremy said tomorrow he will be working with the library on that.
Tomorrow is too soon.
Okay.
But I do want to just reiterate the point that at this moment, we have an approved charge.
Correct.
And so we, there's nothing standing between us and being able to appoint members.
Correct.
If, except for recruiting them.
Right, the only thing I think that we're really going to have to decide right away, like in two weeks, is are we going to have 12 people? Are we going to have six to eight people, you know, and?
We can worry about that when we have an excess of people.
Right. So let's get going.
I mean, there is an issue of form, right?
Well, let's get going on recruiting.
If we have defined it as 12, then forum is what, seven?
All right. But let's see if we can get some really excellent talent onto this committee. You know, we have a lot of talent in town. So we invite everybody, please join this committee.
Well, I mean, you've got these skills too.
Yes.
This is key, I think.
Yes, some of these skills.
And we are looking for.
I think this is a committee that's going to fill up fast because I think this is a
It's a hot ticket.
committee and, yeah.
Right, and then if you.
You'll get a good table at the gala that we're gonna have.
And then if you're not on the executive committee, you may end up getting appointed to a subcommittee. There will be many of those. And that's going to be one of my comments to you also, Henry. I do agree with Linda. I think that the select board should take recommendations from this committee and the select board should appoint to the subcommittees. And that's just my opinion.
No, that's a valid, that's a very valid point.
So everyone send in your opinions, your marked marked up copies to Henry, and we will continue this discussion. And maybe we will even be able to start appointing people at our next meeting.
Sorry.
Yes.
Personal obligation, but Henry, thank you for, I just want to share the difference in work. I just happened on the first page I opened to in the annual town report from '72 was after almost two years of study, it was voted by the committee that the theme for Concord Celebration shall be that the shot heard round the world in the 19th century '75. And so I think we're saying is they took it, we're going to squeeze a two-year process. It's probably a much shorter amount of time to come up with a theme. And so I want to, I just, the illustration was really, I think, clear to me to say, it's just a different time and things move a lot faster, so.
Well, maybe we're in a different time zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe. Well, we don't have any choice. We need to get going quickly, so thank you again.
The date won't move.
We can't change the date.
No, so thank you for reminding us to get going on this, Henry. Good job initially, and we'll continue. Any other questions on this? And are we ready to appoint a select board member to this Concord 2025 Executive Committee? Or do we want to wait?
I would nominate Henry Dane.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Henry, you are our select board member. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
One down. I thought we also, that Mike Lawson was going to.
I was wondering.
Mike Lawson has applied to the
For the stamp, right?
No, he did the stamp, right? But he's also applied to a, Linda might be able to help me out, 250th Regional Battle Road Committee.
I see, okay, that was the one.
But that, he could maybe be on both committees, I don't know.
Well, we talked about AP10 not applying.
No, but that's not a town committee, that 250th.
Yeah, it's regional.
Right, so it wouldn't even matter.
It might not. So Mike, if you want to put in your green card, we'll we'll sort it out. Okay.
He can do it online.
It'd be great to have somebody that had both perspectives, the regional and the.
Well, also, I think we want his, we want his wife on this committee, too.
Uh-oh.
Well, that could complicate it.
Even more so because of the connection with the national guard, which is so important, especially with the new director.
Right.
I think she's critical.
Right, at least one of them has not felt right. Okay, good.
I guess this is to dump the public conversation.
No, it's fine. We're trying to recruit people for our committee security, a lot of talent in town. Okay.
Bringing us to?
Bringing us to committee nominations.
Of which there are none this week.
Right, so committee appointments.
So I move that we appoint Deborah Adelman of One Abbott Lane to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2024. Anne Sussman of 534 Old Marlboro Road to the West Concord Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April 30th, 2024. Belinda Schumay of 365 Garfield Road to the Historic Districts Commission to, for a term to expire on January 1st, 2026.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, all of you, for serving the town. We're ready for committee liaison reports. Susan, usual.
I'm only reporting on committees that met since town meetings, since the committees that I observed prior to town meeting were about town meetings, you know, about whatever their
Right.
warrant articles were. So Conservation Stewardship Restriction Committee met on the 22nd, and it was a fairly straightforward meeting and only lasted about 35 minutes. They have, they have conservation properties that a member, that two members will walk periodically, and then there's a report filed. And they talked about whether there are any, anything not right about it. And it's often things like the neighbors are dumping their brush on the conservation land and or putting things on conservation land that that don't belong there. On the 22nd also was the Thorough District Information Session that Stephen referred to in his report. And it was, I think, pretty well attended. And it was nice that they did divide up into smaller groups for discussion at a couple of points during the presentation. The COA met on the 17th. They will not meet again until September. There's still a need of one full member and two associate members, so that's another green card opportunity. They're slowly implementing programs, and they are faced with space constraints because the, they don't have access to the basement currently because of the town clerk's office is down there until the townhouse's renovation is completed. But they they have a great system set up. I mean, in order to go to this meeting without a mask, I had to go in and, because it was at the, that RV dealer, you go in and you show your vaccination card and you're in the system. And so you only have to show it once. And then if you sign up for events or it's one and done, as far as that's concerned. But people are welcome to wear masks if they choose to. Or of course, if they're not vaccinated, it's mandatory. The NRC met on the 16th and they had a full slate. I think the, in my mind, the most noteworthy event was they did pass, approve the latest white pond design for the the trail down to the waterfront and the plantings and the drainage systems. So that was a big milestone. And that's it for me. Nate?
I have, the library committee had a meeting scheduled for tonight, which I told them I couldn't attend because I would be here, but they canceled it. Their agenda said that they had, on the agenda was the appointment of two people to the committee. So I assumed that the last meeting I went to, there were two vacancies on the committee. And so, and I gave a brief report on that. The two important things were that the the book sale will be on September 11th. And Sherry Litbuck said that the construction project will be done early next year. And so I think that's pretty much what's occupied them. They were unclear as to the duration of the terms of their members, and they were going to consult the town clerk because they had, I think, two expiring the same year.
Right.
Moving on to the.
And a question about that, the first thing you said was appointments.
Yes.
So the select board will be doing the appointments. It sounds like what they're going to do is interview or invite those people to attend their meeting.
Well, there were two people who attended the meeting that I did attend in person. And I think they were both interested in being members of the committee. And I don't know whether they were carrying that forward.
Right, they might recommend those two people to us, Grace, okay.
So I also attended the multi-town gas leak program on, earlier this week. And what I found quite fascinating about it was that it's run by National Grid. It's curated or managed or hosted by somebody from National Grid. And the first half of it was a PowerPoint, a set of slides about repairing gas leaks. And I asked them to get me a copy of that PowerPoint. And so I think that's coming, that's coming along. But the fascinating thing about it was there were 38 towns represented. And I would say at least half of the conversation during that two-hour period was about the the home rule petitions, similar to the one that we had filed with the legislature on limiting the use of fossil fuels in new construction. And it appears that there were at least five other towns who have filed similar legislation. And I haven't got from them a spreadsheet about some of the different features of those. And I will get, I'm working on getting copies of the legislation or the votes from those towns. But I thought it was, I wouldn't say ironic, but it was very interesting that something that was run by National Grid was, a good portion of it was activists who wanted to limit the use of fossil fuels. And one of the participants was a woman who was on the staff at Harvard Law School, who was helping, she's on the faculty, but she's a member of the staff. And I guess Harvard Law School has a project assisting towns in projects that are designed to limit the use of fossil fuels. So that's, I know, one other thing I might mention is tomorrow at 3 o'clock, tomorrow afternoon, I'm meeting with Tish Hopkins about the George Duggan issue. And we're going to see if we can work something out in order to recognize, recognize him. And my thought is that it might actually turn, my thought, and I don't know if it's her thought, that it might be turned into something that might be a more substantial project, which might be to have even a new memorial dedicated to former slaves who were, former slaves who were, who died in fighting the Civil War. I think that might be more suitable than doing something like just pasting a plaque on one of the existing memorials. But we'll see, we'll see what she, I mean, I think she's the one who's most interested in getting this done and driving it. I was asking, I was asked to work with her.
Great, this was Tish.
At Tish?
Yeah.
Tish.
Is that, are you, who has cemetery committee? I don't have any longer, but.
She is, yeah, she's.
No, no, I mean, as a liaison.
Henry, you have a cemetery commission?
No, I have, I do not. I have.
I was just wondering, because they've had a lot of.
I have, I'm newly, the new alliance cemetery.
Yes, you are.
That's the first item on your list.
I just wanted to comment, yay, you're gonna love it. And they spent a lot of time talking about George Duggan. And there was, for a couple of years in a row, the fifth graders at Willard had petitioned to, for recognition of George Duggan, which had been not acknowledged by the Army because they never, you know, they couldn't find his remains. But that was the case with many of the soldiers in the battle that he was in. So that's how, there was a whole process when they came up with the, putting a separate plaque at the site of the Civil War, you know, the obelisk in the town green, with the hope perhaps in the future that he would be added to the, to the main one. But it's a, you know, very interesting story, and that's an interesting expansion of it. We would like to.
Yeah, they might be able to work with Robbins House. They were, Robbins House was a pro bono tentative right for about a year. So, you know, we'll see what we can do.
Right.
And I don't think that's a committee or anything at this point. It's just another project.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it's under the umbrella of the cemetery committee, too. But I mean, they would be.
We'll have to revise the order chart.
Okay, well, Linda and Henry will coordinate on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Matt, you want to go next?
Sure, so I think like a few of the rest of us, I attended the Thorough Depot redevelopment forum. I think it was really interesting how they did the breakout groups and were able to collect, you know, substantial amount of feedback. And, you know, the proposals seem to be pretty concrete at this point. It'll be interesting to see how the feedback is incorporated going forward. It'll be interesting to see how the feedback is incorporated going forward. Also, there was a very interesting middle school building committee meeting where the architects took us through a more refined floor plan proposal, as well as selection of materials discussion, and initial discussion on that. And also, sort of, the look and feel types of issues were, you know, initiated. And so this next phase of the project is less about, okay, the overall program for the school and the size of the spaces, and much more about, okay, how do they relate to one another? What are they made out of? And, you know, how is it all going to look? And so that process is just getting underway, and it is fascinating in its own right. And then I attended a meeting with National Grid on Friday.
Good.
I was there, too, but you spoke so well, I had nothing to add.
Well, anyway, it was, you know, about the gas leaks, and that, you know, they have two different programs. One is a proactive program of replacement, you know, sort of preventative maintenance of the most gas-leak-prone pipes. And then the other is reactive, when there is a rupture, you know, going in and trying to fix it. And clearly, they want to do more proactive than reactive, you know, because it's much more efficient and less disruptive to people. And we had a similar conversation about fossil fuel infrastructure and so on, but.
So Matt, was this the local meeting?
It was the local meeting, the Concord meeting with the, yeah, with the DPW.
So Matt, what proactive measures are they actually taking?
So the proactive measures are, they have identified pipes that are made out of different kinds of materials that are prone to leaks.
Okay.
And so they're prioritizing the replacement of those pipes in coordination with the town and its, you know, infrastructure projects.
So, for example, is that why Hubbard Street is a high priority?
Hubbard Street is a good old-fashioned pipe. But, you know, they described the different sort of generations of materials that were used, and the ones that were more problematic than others, and, you know, how they're addressing that. So that was one angle. But one other thing to note, and they did have the list of priority leaks.
Oh.
Okay, so, and that was in their PowerPoint.
We can get a copy of?
Yeah, and so, you know, they have just, you know, a few really high priority ones, and then some lower priority ones. And the, you know, there is legislation that requires them to have a plan to take care of those.
Right, and they're not up to date on that, right?
But one thing to note is that the plans are not town-specific, right? They are region-wide. So the priority is they take the highest priority ones in their service area. So Concord, you know, won't necessarily get a linear response to these things. It's really by overall priority for all of National Grid's areas. So that, I think, was eye-opening to me.
So do they have a timeline on these priority ones?
They, well, like, the highest priority ones, they're like immediate, they have to get on it. Right? And the second level, I think, is in a year or something, and so they're.
Because I saw a list like that, I attended a previous meeting of what Henry was in, and they were way behind on the statutory deadlines of what they're supposed to be doing.
Right. So.
So it'll be interesting to get a copy of it.
Yes.
A grade, okay.
So I didn't know, Susan, you had anything more to add from that briefing, but.
No, and they, there were just a few on the list for Concord. But that makes sense, based on what you're saying, that they have a broader view. So it was fairly narrow.
It was only a handful that are on their list.
That's why we should have our own gas company.
Well.
That's another project.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to be the news of that.
Okay, I think that's all I'd like to highlight this week.
All right, thank you. Linda?
So I attended the Junction Village Open Space Committee meeting. In this particular meeting, they had Bill Murray from Places, which is an environmental landscaping firm, that met with them and as well as Sam Williams, who's the new executive director from the prison outreach program. And together, but in very different ways, they participated in sort of a visioning and brainstorming exercise with the committee about what they would like to see happen at the open space there, Junction Village. And it's really meant for passive recreation, but it needs to connect to the Christopher Heights system living in terms of also being available or meaningful to the families and residents, families who will be visiting the residents as well as the residents of that facility. So that follows up a previous session I had commented on, where they just brought in.
David Wood.
David Wood from Museum and a couple of other people who spoke about the unique history to that area. And so what they're trying to do is also capture some of that, whether it be in signage or some kind of symbolic markings or, you know, displays or whatever. And then also incorporate the library influence in that area. So they've got all kinds of ideas that they're generating. And having just, you know, clearly, the committee is seeing what mural that was put up at Salt Box and the way that that was handled. So, you know, that was referenced as well in terms of.
Good. And the white ladies' lap that they're going to be doing.
Yeah, exactly. So there's a lot of things they're trying to capture. On that same day was the opening to build celebration for 9:30 Main Street. And I was asked to speak to both the select board and the town's contributions to that. And there were a number of people who were there, representing faith groups, larger corporate donors for Habitat in general, and, you know, people from the town and so forth. So they've already been working on the property, of course, but this was their official ribbon cutting for the build out, so.
Right, thank you.
And the two families who have been selected and were introduced at that meeting. And so that was exciting. Yeah, and very grateful, very grateful for the opportunity.
Good, thank you.
And hopefully, we'll all be participating in the October Build Day, you know, and we'll be there with our hammers and our mugs and.
I can bruise my thumb with the best of them.
Very good.
All right.
So that concludes my.
Okay. I have a very brief report. So I watched the FinCom Finance Committee meeting the other night, and there is one vacancy on the Finance Committee, another green card opportunity. They, of course, reviewed the capital planning task force that we've already heard about. I also filled in for Matt at the PIG Access a few weeks ago. There's a vacancy on that committee. And a very important thing coming up is the Department of Telecommunications and Cable representatives were there as guest speakers, because the committee is going to start the license renewal process, which can take up to 36 months. It's a 10-year license usually. So this is beginning, and the select board is going to be very involved in this. So I have a meeting with Chairman Carlin Reed, and you'll be hearing more about this. Also, that committee recommended to change, they want to ask us to change their charge from seven to five members, with only three citizens at large, instead of five. So that will probably be coming up in one of our July agendas. I think we've seen a letter from about a month, two months ago. And, let's see, well, maybe that's enough to go over for tonight. Yeah, that's enough for tonight. So miscellaneous correspondence. I apologize if someone emailed me today after 11:00 a.m. My email was down. I got some of them from my phone, but I may have missed something. But we do have in our packet a letter from Core Communities Organizing Against Racism. And they are agreeing with the League of Women Voters and other groups encouraging the select board to form a DEI Commission versus the Equity Inclusion. So that will also be on a future agenda. And at this time, we are ready for public comment. Are there any public comments? I don't see any live, is there any Zoom?
There are no handrails, so if you do a public comment, please use the raise hand feature, or just turn on your video and audio and keep talking.
All right, seeing none. I actually, before we adjourn, want to ask the board to think about, or maybe you already know, did this 6:30 time work for you? Do you want to try that again next time? Do you want to think about it? Can we do this time all summer? Any thoughts?
Worked for me.
I think this is terrific. It's so great to have a meeting with people.
With people.
Right. Well, we're going to have a live meeting again, definitely.
And thank you for all the technical people who helped.
Potentially, so, Linda's asking whether I could make it at 6:00. I mean, I think it's a little more comfortable that I could wolf down some dinner before coming here at 6:30. But I technically could make it at 6:00, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think 6:30 is kind of a sweet spot in that, you know, well, I mean, not every meeting ends as soon, but this is still a reasonable hour. And even if we had more substantial business, we'd likely.
Right. Get home before dark in the summer. All right, we'll try 6:30 again. So our next meeting will be July 12th. Thank you for attending. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you again to all the technical people.
Yes.
Thank you, great job.
Really good job, thanks.